All right, well, we have returned to open session. All right, at this time, is there any public comment? Yes.
Hello, thanks to see you all again. My name is Kim Eddy. And I am a teacher at Hollywood School. I teach the advanced learning math program at Hollywood School. And I'm also a parent of two Hollywood students, third grade and fifth grade. So I just wanted to contribute some of my personal thoughts on the multipurpose room at Hollywood School. And I hope you don't mind if I read something that I've written. I also wanted to say, I know that this is something you've already given very much consideration to, and I really appreciate that. So the multipurpose room is something that I believe is necessary to alleviate space issues at Hollywood School. I'm fortunate to be currently working, sharing a conference room space with the other advanced learning teacher to hold my math groups. I feel strongly that my students need this consistent environment to learn so that they can have easy access to our classroom materials and refer to charts and graphs that are on the walls. Previous to working in this conference room space, which is the only conference room we currently have at Hollywood, Mrs. Dykes and I shared a smaller space, which meant that if my group size, which does fluctuate throughout the year, if it got large enough, I was sometimes borrowing other spaces to teach my math groups, like kindergarten classroom or the library when it was available. So I'm very appreciative to have the consistent use this year of the conference room. Unfortunately, this often leaves other teachers, students, and parents who would normally use the conference space for various reasons, struggling to find other places to meet. I imagine this is going to become an even greater issue when we return to a normal school year and people are meeting in person in larger groups more regularly again. As a parent, I want my children to have reasonable space to meet for band and orchestra, a space to have indoor recess when necessary, a space to learn in small groups other than the hallway, and a school space that they take pride in. The conflicts with band and orchestra, having lunch in gym in the same place, the lack of small group instruction space, and various other complications could be alleviated by the addition of a multipurpose room. So I just ask that you approve the project that the parent community has been patiently awaiting, the Hollywood staff feel the necessity for on a daily basis, and the Hollywood students deserve. And I just want to thank you all for all of your consideration and all that you do. And just wanted to also say, Mr. Miller, I know that you're wrapping up your time on the board, and I just wanted to personally thank you for your dedication to District 96.
Thanks very much, Mrs. Eddy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good day.
Thank you.
Right. And I understand we have two emails for public comment as well. All right, let's see. So the first one is from Stacy Doyle. It reads, "As the board is aware, there is legislation going through the process in Illinois to require schools to test for dyslexia starting next year." This is HB 3324. "We believe this will make great strides in supporting a student population that is estimated to be 10% to 20% of the whole, but identification is only the first step. Up-to-date training, empathy, and adequate instruction support must follow. As parents of a child diagnosed with dyslexia," excuse me, "hearing about HB 3324 was music to our ears. As our child was very fortunate in that he was diagnosed early after issues were noted by a very perceptive and caring teacher. Additionally, the school that our child attended at the time was very tuned in to helping identify and support students with dyslexia. We were able to adjust his learning plan by second grade, and he received dyslexic-specific instruction through the Scottish Right Take Flight Program that has been adopted by the school, not just standard reading intervention, for one and a half years until we moved to Riverside. At that point, he had become a proficient reader, i.e. decoder of words, but still struggled with the comprehension behind that reading. Because the school was already on top of the instructional needs and changes, we only put in place a 504 and not an IEP to get our child the support he required. Prior to our move to Riverside in 2016, we reached out to D-96 School District and were assured that dyslexic students were cared for in the curriculum here. Once enrolled, we witnessed our child test in and out of reading interventions repeatedly, testing out when his scores peaked at the 15th percentile. However, we were not always notified when the reading interventions were stopped. We witnessed our child continue to struggle and become more and more disenfranchised from his own education. We met about 504s and had accommodations in place, but the instructional interventions were not meeting the needs. It was at that time in fifth grade when we felt like we were at a crossroads and we needed something more formal in place, we requested an IEP for dyslexia. We went through the entire and lengthy process to be told by the school principal that he didn't believe the dyslexia diagnosis was still valid. When asked if the school could make an evaluation or diagnosis themselves, we were told that the school doesn't test for dyslexia. When asked if we could pay for an outside testing with a neuropsychologist, we were told that the school didn't have to take those test results as fact. It became clear that the school was not interested in working with us to support the needs of our child with a dyslexia diagnosis. We then shifted to understanding if there was any expertise in any dyslexia-specific instructional programming in the school. Take Flight, Wilson Method, Barton, Wharton, Gillingham? We were told that there wasn't. It was also clear that his teachers along the way had very little understanding of the needs of a dyslexic student. We asked if we could incorporate a dyslexic-specific tutor into our child's school day in place of the reading intervention pullout that we would pay for, and we were told that there would be an insurance liability issue with that, and it couldn't be accommodated. In the end, our child worked with an outside tutor after school hours paid for by ourselves. This story is not told to earn stripes of or sympathy. It is to highlight that there are failure points around dyslexia in D-96. Failure points around identification, teachers being able to see it, and administrators being willing to accept it. Failures around instructional opportunities and failures around empathy for our students and families. While we were excited about HB 3324, it occurred to us, why does our school district and our community require legislation? Regardless of whether this bill passes into law, we should be doing better by these students. We ask that the board take up this topic and invest in these students and in testing, programming for, and supporting them. We are happy to support this effort and share our experience with our previous school district and what we have learned as parents. There are some innovative ways to build understanding and empathy that can be employed. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. Joe and Stacy Doyle." Okay, the next one is from Kari Huffman. Okay, it says, "Hello, Board of Education members. I am writing to find out the status on the facility projects for Hollywood School. The two projects that I believe were approved last school year were the playground update and the addition of a multipurpose room. After listening in on the board meeting last week, it sounds like plans are moving forward for the playground. However, some members were hesitant to spend the amount needed to build the playground the architects had planned. What was decided on this? When will construction begin? I don't know if you had any further discussions regarding Hollywood multipurpose room addition, but I do think it was an improved project as of last year. Is that still part of the facility's plan? I certainly hope so, and here's why. Hollywood needs the space for group meetings and class combined experiences. With the potential of going back to school day in the fall, we need all the space that we can get to space the kids out as much as possible. With advanced learning in the conference room, we have no current space for orchestra. We could use the library, but the other schools have been unwilling to give Hollywood different times for orchestra or library, so we've always had them in the same place. With the addition of an NPR, we would have the additional space needed. We really need two spaces for gym and lunch. It is not sanitary to eat and exercise in the same space. Having indoor recess in the same space as lunch, and in fact during lunch, is really unacceptable. It is extremely loud and not to mention unsanitary. Please let me know the status of both projects. I really appreciate your update. I know both these projects are extremely important to the many parents and students at Hollywood School." Thank you. Kari Huffman. All right, were there any additional public comments?
There was not. With Kari Huffman, she did have, it was dated April 21st. It's a little shorter, and it should be a little bit below that strand.
Okay.
It starts, Mr. Hunt, I'm following up on my email I sent back in February.
Okay. "I am following up on my email I sent back in February. My primary reason for follow-up is a potential Hollywood NPR. Your mention in your response below that the potential Hollywood projects, including the NPR, are dependent upon how the new bids look in comparison to the previously approved budget. What is the previously approved budget for the NPR project? What did the new bids come in at? Is this decision being put to a vote tonight? I apologize if all of this is somewhere I should have already seen it. I outlawed my reasons below that explain why Hollywood School definitely requires an NPR. I hope the board considers all these reasons when making this very important vote. Thank you for your time." Kari Huffman. Okay. All right, so at this time, are there any board member proposed changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Then that moves us to the superintendent's report.
All right, thanks, Dan. So I have a, just a brief update for everybody on our increased in-person learning time. As you all know, it was just last Monday where we extended a full day for our elementary students that were interested in coming back full-time. And we have, I believe in our memo, it's 600 and, sorry. We have 683 students attending across the four elementary schools now for in-person learning. So I did share the enrollment by grade level and by school there for all of you. I've also shared the information about the number of students staying for lunch. I know that was something that was of great interest to everybody. Right now, we have 16 students staying at Ames and at Blythe Park, 12 to 14 students, depending on the day. At Central, 15 to 18 students. In Hollywood, 3 to 7 students. I just really want to thank the community for that. That was something that, as you know, even though I believe we absolutely have safe ways for children to eat lunch in school, it was something that felt very daunting to our lunch supervisors and just something that certainly would create some strain on our physical space availabilities without necessarily being able to use the outdoors as much as possible. So anyway, that has turned out to not be our most significant issue. We're glad to report, and again, just very appreciative of everyone's flexibility. I will tell you, the first week back, and I think probably all the teachers would say the same, it just felt like there were a lot of children back in the building as there were. It was a little bit of a, you know, surprise, I think, for everybody. Not that we didn't anticipate it, but it just felt so very different than how it had felt all year. Walking through the schools even just earlier this week, it starts to feel very normal. You know, again, really quite quickly, I drove by Central, and there were so many cars right out there dropping children off just a little before 1:00, and I thought, oh, my goodness, you know, it just felt like this is how it has been in the past. So again, I think that teachers are becoming kind of quickly familiar with the old routines, which are now new routines, but becoming familiar again. And again, I would say that it's going very well here in our second week. So we're looking forward to being able to end the school year this way, and certainly looking forward to being able to start the new school year, again, with the virus cooperating certainly, but very hopeful about that direction. So that's going well, and I just wanted to share that. I also shared an update, as I really have, I think, every board meeting, an update on our saliva screening continues to be an interesting area, really still encouraging families to participate. I know I've received a few consent forms of families that had been remote and are now in person, and we're kind of quick to say we do want to participate in that. So you have that data. Wanted to share with all of you, I don't know if there are any particular questions about that. You know, it's something we've talked about quite a bit. The other thing I have, kind of shifting gears altogether, as you know, with all the construction that was done at our schools, we were never able to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We just didn't feel that we were able to do it in a way that was safe with our social distancing and COVID mitigations. But one of the things I had wanted to present, I think Kathy said it was time to bring it and maybe get it off her desk, I wanted to share this with all of you because this is something we found during construction. And it's actually a letter from Mrs. Ames to the Board of Education thanking the Board of Education for naming Ames School after what, at that point now, had become her late husband. So anyway, just a very touching letter to the family of, the family of Albert F. Ames, deeply appreciates and gratefully acknowledges the token of esteem to the memory of their beloved and faithful superintendent and expressed in the resolution ordered by the Board of Education, a copy of which beautifully engraved, I believe, and signed by the president and members of the board has been delivered to them. So there is a post date from 1931.
Wow.
So we have that framed. We'll make sure that it finds a place here at Ames School. And just thought it was, I think Bill Radke, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, found it in a box in the maintenance garage. He goes, "Do you think you want this?" And I said, "Yeah, I think we do want that." So anyway, it was just kind of funny how things turn up and just, again, reminds us of the significance and the history of our school district. So that was kind of a fun find and something that we will make sure hangs at Ames, and at some point, we will have, I think, a ribbon-cutting or celebration of our new facilities, which won't be so new by the time we're able to do that.
Do you know the story about how Ames himself found out about that?
How, what was it?
Do you know the story about how Ames found out that it was going to be named after him?
No, I don't think I.
Well, I guess he was sitting in the office that was Central at that point, and it was 1923, I guess, and a guy pulled up with a load of bricks and came into his office, and he said, "Can you direct me to the Ames School?", which they were then building at the time. So he didn't know at that time that it was named, but I guess the board had already decided that, so I was kind of.
There's a lot of history here. So anyway, I love that one. Also, we have not had our student presenters here this year, as you know, again, because of social distancing and just capacity issues, so something we really missed. But just earlier today, I got a letter from Caitlin Stabe, who's one of our special education teachers, who works very hard with our Special Olympics program. And the Special Olympics program at Hauser School, they were named the Cool School Champion Plunger. So the polar plunge is a fundraising activity that Special Olympics does every sort of late winter, when it's not quite yet spring, and often they go and plunge in a, I think, a pond in the Oak Brook area, right? But this year, they did a dunk tank at Hauser School. I know it was something I popped in to see. It was not a warm day, it was a sunny day, so I think for early March, it felt pretty good. But there were a good number of our staff members that were dunked in a dunk tank of very cold water to raise money for Special Olympics, and they were acknowledged for those efforts. So there are some fun pictures, and I've attached those in Board Book also. But again, just a really spirited event and one of those times where it's like, you know, here we are in the midst of the pandemic, and families and, you know, children and our staff still finding ways to celebrate. So that was great. The other thing that, was there a comment about that?
No.
Okay.
That's great. I saw that when it was happening, so yes, it was not.
It was not, it was not warm. I would not have done that. The other thing, today, we had our annual safety meeting, and we had 25 of us on a Zoom screen. It was our police and fire officials from Riverside, North Riverside, and Brookfield. So again, trying to continue on with some of these very important and normal activities, even during a pandemic, and it was just a nice opportunity to connect and talk about school safety and talk about the shared work we do in terms of supporting students and families in our community. So that was just today, and pleased that we were able to do that. And always appreciative of our partnerships with fire and police and with the Three Villages. So that is my superintendent's report, Dan.
All right. Thank you very much, Martha. Apparently, we did have one more public comment.
Okay. Oh, that.
That is great, yes. Alluding to that, that is great. That's what it is, and it's survived all these many years, just in a box.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Before we move on, can I just make a comment?
Absolutely.
About the saliva screening. I noticed that the numbers keep dropping for participation. I'd just sort of like to make a plea to the community. I mean, people have been calling the news and what have you. The number of cases among kids are vastly increasing. It's the younger population that's now taking up the majority of cases. And I think it's imperative that, I mean, the district, we're offering this to the community. I think it's imperative that the parents take advantage of this because the kids are now, it's no longer the 80-plus-year-olds or 70-plus-year-olds, it's the kids that are most at risk now. And it's showing in the numbers and in the hospitalization rates. So I would just ask the community to, like, look at this a little bit closer and participate. I mean, we all need to get through this, and we want to open schools next year. And we won't be able to do that like we'd like to if this kit numbers don't go down.
I completely agree with what David said.
David, definitely thank you for bringing that up. It's definitely good to repeat that again.
Absolutely. And I'll send out another reminder tomorrow because I have a parent communication ready to go out, and I will continue to link the consent form and encourage people to participate. I know our principals are doing the same. I think even just, you know, neighbors and, you know, talking to other parents in the community, I think you're absolutely right that this is, there are a lot of concern right now about, you know, younger population.
Right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Could the Board Secretary read the contents of tonight's consent agenda?
The consent agenda for tonight consists of meeting minutes from prior sessions, closed session, March 3, 2021, committee of the whole meeting, March 3, 2021, closed session, March 17, 2021, regular business meeting, March 17, 2021, the personnel report as presented, payables pre-list as of March 31, 2021, and April 21, 2021.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve tonight's consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
All right, is there any discussion? Are we removing any? No. Okay. Let's see, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi.
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Marhol.
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber.
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead.
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, the next item is the approval of administrative contact, contracts, excuse me. Is there a motion, the Board of Education approve the administrators' contracts as presented? Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Barsadi.
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Marhol.
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber.
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, the next item is the Riverside Education Council. Any representatives in the REC here tonight? All right, then next.
Dan, can I back us up briefly?
Absolutely.
Usually, when we approve the contracts, we do summarize what the salary increases are.
Okay. All right, absolutely.
I'll be honest, I don't have that number in front of me, and if Jim, Jim, I'm going to arbitrarily pick on you that you may have that.
Yeah, I just have the contracts themselves. I don't have.
Well, it's maybe 3%, except for a few individuals. I think it was 3%.
I believe you're correct, Jeff.
Yeah.
Except for, Ms. May got 4%.
I think you're the only one.
And that was the only one that was.
So in general, in overall, the administrators received a 3% increase with the exception of Ms. May, who received 4%.
All right. Thanks for bringing that up. All right, and the next item on the agenda is board member comments. Any board member comments this evening?
I wanted to say, as a parent who's getting used to the news all day, and I do appreciate, I just want to give props to the other parents that have really made an effort, like Martha said, to go and to drop off at lunch and to be back again and again. And the kids have done really well just being patient and waiting, and all of them really excited and running with the lesser backpack that's not powered with things. So I'm hopeful that we can make some gains, and I know that, you know, whether it's the Director of Teaching and Learning, Angela, or the teachers or the parents, we're all hoping for gains. So I want to thank everyone for the adjustment yet again because we pivoted so many times. But, you know, do what you got to do to make gains, but it's been, it's been okay.
It's definitely been a big pivot and a big change, but I think a very good one, very positive one for the students. I'm a parent of a kindergartner myself, and while the school day has not changed much for the kindergarten classes, I think I was hearing rave reports from my son today about how his class now has pet worms, which, and there were pictures of the pet worms as well. So all in all, it seemed like a big step back towards normal. We're not quite there yet, we're not ready to be there yet, but we're definitely getting there, and I think it's, I think the students' families are definitely very appreciative of that.
Dan, looking at the numbers we have, it looks like about 80% of our children are back in school. I know, talking to some of them, that they are very much enjoying that experience and really desire to be with their peers. And also, I know that it did require extra effort on the part of our teachers, and we appreciate that. We know that transitions aren't always easy. I personally believe that it's better to make this transition as much as we can now with the hopes that, beginning the new school year next fall, will be much easier and much more normal. And of course, that is dependent on where the virus takes us.
I completely agree.
Oh, sorry. I know we're focusing on in-person learners here too, but I know there are remote learners out there whose families are pivoting as well and making some changes. So I just wanted to, you know, make sure we extend that acknowledgement to everybody. Everybody involved, parents, teachers, staff, and administrators. This has been a heavy load for everybody, and it's greatly appreciated.
No, absolutely. It's not like 1%, it's a significant change.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Then that brings us to committee reports. The first committee listed tonight is the Personnel Committee.
No topics for tonight.
Okay, next is the Policy Committee.
Oh, no topics.
All right, which brings us to Facilities.
There's no topics for tonight. I'm just kidding. Just trying to lighten it a little bit.
Yeah, right.
Sorry, Joel, I'll let you talk.
I was all ready, too. My thunder is gone. Facilities met last week. As you will hear shortly, most of our discussion was around the bids and potential for Central and Hollywood. But we are looking forward to seeing what the priorities of the strategic plan are and continuing to evaluate our future plans and where improvements can be made.
All right. Thank you, Joel. And next then is the Education Committee.
Oh, yeah, based on, you know, what Martha's already talked about, obviously, staff and families are busy with the in-person adjustment, but, you know, there will be some standardized assessments coming up, which Angela's already spoken to, so they'll be thinking about how we assess what is currently happening with our students and how we adjust and make gains. So we're going to look out for that. But also, we're talking about a Hauser start change, just based on what has worked well through pandemic and what works well for children that we've seen and is researched. So we'll be listening for that. And also, our school calendar, of course, is that time of year. I tried to hopefully reassure the others that it feels normal to me as a parent, and hopefully it'll feel not so different for their other families when they take a look at it. So that's about it for now.
All right. Thank you, Sheri. And finally, that brings us to the Finance Committee.
Yeah, I have a report right now.
You don't want to do one last. I could. You would be great if you pulled out, I guess.
Where's your chart? Yeah.
Okay, then that brings us to Old Business. The first item under Old Business is the Central Sprinkler Replacement Project Bids Approval. Let's see, at this time, is there a motion, the Board of Education, approve the replacement of the sprinkler system at Central School per the contracts document developed by DLA Architects and publicly bid on March 22, 2021?
So moved.
Second. All right.
Let's have some discussion, though.
Should we ask Ramash to briefly present?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So, we publicly bid the projects out on March 22nd and had a pre-bid meeting with the contractors on March 26th. And opened bids and read them out publicly on April 7th of this month. Now, the important thing to remember out here was this project was set up by a life safety issue and we have to do this project. And there was a chance that the numbers would be really high because of the complexity of the project, the timing that's, that it's required to be completed in. And I think we did really, really well in our bids. I mean, if you look at the numbers, prior to the bids, I had done a cost estimate for the project and we had looked at approximately $1.4 million as the budget for the project. And we have received a number substantially lower than that. And after reviewing the numbers with the contractor, DLA and Vistar feel very confident that we've got the right contractor. And I would also like to point out that the number that's being asked for approval includes an additional allowance of $100,000, which allows us to look at unforeseen issues. The schedule is going to be extremely challenging from the fact that we can start construction only after school closes. But the point is that once we get approved today, our intention is to get into the pre-construction mode right away and have them put the drawings together for the building permits that we are required and to start pre-ordering the long lead time items. I would like to point out that we're in an extremely challenging construction mode at this time. If you're aware, if you've seen the papers, you can see that everyone's talking about an infrastructure bill. And because of that, there's been a lot of up pricing that's been taking place in numbers. Many of our other public bids, we've seen numbers skyrocket, especially on items like steel, copper, piping, lumber. And in this case, we've really done very well in keeping our number below our budget, number one. And number two, in getting a contractor who is willing to work with us and who has experience doing schoolwork. And I believe DLA and Vistar feel very strongly that this is the right contractor for the project.
So, just to explicitly state, the projected budget was 1.4 million and this bid came in at 1,500,000.
That is correct.
Just want to make sure that's, so that is, and that, that 1,500,000 includes the 100,000 contingency.
That is correct. So, it's actually 950 and so if the 100,000 is not used, we get the remainder of it back.
Can you reiterate the contingencies that you're considering?
So, when we take, so, most of the pipes are above the ceiling, so you have to dismantle the ceiling. And we also know that there's lead paint on the walls.
Right.
So, we are required, we've actually talked to the contractor about reusing the openings in the exist, the existing openings when they put the new pipes through. But there are many instances because of new code changes that require new pipes in new locations, which mean new penetrations. We cannot say which ones at this time, so that's why we needed that contingency.
Right, I'm just checking because it's really what we talked about before, which is, you know, if we have to leave them open, we will if it's necessary, but it's similar to what we talked about before then with the lead paint.
That is correct.
Gotcha, I just was saying, is there anything new or?
No, we haven't opened up any of the ceilings yet because classes are in session.
Right, and you never know what you're going to find up there, but.
Correct.
Right, thank you.
And we've also engaged an environmental consultant who will be helping us and who's on ready, on call all the time in case we need to do some testing.
Great, thank you. Any other questions about that or?
I had one question and I do remember the, originally when we started talking about this, I think the idea of it was around a million and then it was increased, the budget was increased to 1.4. I'm definitely happy to see it come down to roughly around a million, a little over. And just wondering, I mean, what was, I'm wondering how we jumped there and back, I guess, is that, what were we considering and what was the main concerns that increased it to, the estimate to 1.4 and we lucked out and got back to one, around one?
There are two key elements. The first one is timing and schedule. We anticipated a lot more overtime, so when we questioned the low bidder in this case, we talked to them about it as to how many crews are they going to bring onto the job? They said they'll have three full crews and if they feel they're falling behind, they'll start working on Saturdays too. And we know that in union contracts, a Saturday is a 50% premium. So, that is number one that we had to take into account. Second thing is commodity pricing. Pipes have gone up in price, they've doubled. And since we started the project, it's gone up almost 80%. So, we felt that there's a good chance that the bids that are received will reflect that. But we've lucked out in the sense that sprinkler piping is fairly standard. The sizes, the Schedule 40 and Schedule 80 that are used are very standard pipes. And luckily, I guess our contractors found a good stock because we see the other numbers in the bids, they're substantially higher. Okay, so it looks like this contractor got a good load, I mean, he found a good subcontractor and the pricing was very much in our favor. If we had missed out, if he had made a mistake, we would have been at 1.4. So, we've done very well as far as checking with this contractor and feeling that number is correct.
Have we worked with this construction company before?
I haven't, but DLA has. Ryan, do you want to step in and say something about that?
Hi, evening, yeah, we've worked with Tanon Construction on a couple of different projects. They're engaged in quite a bit of public schoolwork currently, so we've had some very good experience in successful project completion with them. So, we did an extensive scope review as Ramesh mentioned and we feel very confident about their ability to complete this project.
Thank you.
Well, Dan, to your point, there were four bids and the bids ranged from this 1, 1,500,000 all the way up to almost 1,800,000. So, Ramesh's estimate was where it should be in terms of where estimates are expected to be, which is in about the middle. So, this, as he noted, this could have been much higher. We got a good contractor, the contractor wants the work, they've been vetted by DLA and Ramesh. Right now, things look good.
Okay, I definitely agree. All right, is there any further discussion?
No, thank you, Ramesh, for all the extra work. I know none of us anticipated this project, but you've done well responding to a strange, you know, phenomenon which happens with these historic buildings. But I wish we found it sooner, obviously, but, you know, I'm really grateful that it's taken care of this summer, so.
You have a great architect too.
Yeah, and yeah, thank you, Ryan, and the rest, yeah.
All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Hollywood Edition Play Lot Construction Project Bid Approval. At this time, is there a motion, the Board of Education approve Vistar's recommendation for the following multi-part project award? Bid base A, construction of a 1450 square foot multipurpose room addition for 1.3, 3,300,000. Base bid two, removal of existing playground and the construction of a new playground and play structure site work, 292,000. Provide operable windows at the multipurpose room, 16,000. Total award recommendation of 1.6 million, 11,000 to Apex Construction Group of Chicago. The projected budget for this project was 1.8 million.
So moved.
Second?
Oh, Jesus, sorry. I did both.
Doesn't roll when I left the tongue, does it?
Yeah.
All right, is there any discussion?
So, on this project, if you recall, the previous number which Burgland had presented as part of the contract last year was 1.2 million dollars for the multipurpose room. And when we did not award that contract at that time itself, I said that we would pay more if we bid it separately this year. Now, considering, once again, going back to my statement that we had a very strange construction market this year, I think we've done extremely well to get that number only, less than 10% higher, number one. Number two is our playground has come in almost a third less because we had projected about 380, 400,000, it's come in at 290,000, substantially less than what we had predicted. The overall cost of the project, including the alternate, which is for the operable windows that the board had requested, is an extremely favorable number. The number cannot be guaranteed next year, let's put it this way, it will never be cheaper. I mean, we are always in an escalating market, it's 3 or 4% each year that we may end up paying more for. Now, once again, this is a very good contractor that we've gotten the numbers from, we got as many as six bids. It's very, they grouped very well, it's rise right, right where we wanted the numbers to be. And I think, once again, it's a good contractor, good experience, cool work that they've done before, and I think we should move towards awarding the contract.
Can we have this discussion?
We discussed, the facilities agrees with Ramesh, we discussed it extensively and we do, the number, the bids are appropriate. And we did, as you know, defer this project because of the discussions at Hollywood. And this does, the, we did reduce the scope of the playground to narrow its focus a little bit, which we think was good and effective. And gets Hollywood to where it needs to be in terms of a playground space. We also want to take advantage of the agreement with Hollywood House. It was long discussions to get to where we're at and this space will be good for the school. It certainly won't need any more for a long, long time, if ever. The Facilities Committee is very supportive of this.
Yeah, this recommendation.
If Linda wants to have other words.
Yeah, no, Joel and I are both part of the Facilities Committee and we had a meeting with Ramesh and we came out of the committee both recommending this, this award, so, yeah. I think, I think some of the board's main concern was the budget and would it be coming in budget and it's under budget. It's not, in a perfect world, this project would already be done last year with the, the cheaper bid that we had last year, but it's not a perfect world. But this is as good of a, a good, a good of a place as we could have hoped for. So, I know I support the project, but happy to have more discussion if needed.
Well, and bringing it back to, from facilities to, from a more just individual perspective, you know that I was not always quite sure about this. But I've thought, thought about it and looked at the floor plans that Kim has provided and I can see where the space is needed, it justified. I, I think that we will be, personally, I believe that the district will be under a certain amount of obligation to try and give the community some access to that space. Not for free, but I think we can make better arrangements to leverage it more for the benefit of Hollywood.
Right, and the projected estimates for this project were 1.5 plus 400,000, so 1.9. So, we're down substantially less than that at 1.6, 1.6 low.
The, and the, the other thing that Mr. Fitten had provided in this packet is, I know, you know, we couldn't do this project, then the pandemic hits, we're worried about finances, obviously, you know. But I don't know if Jim has, wants to speak to it, but he provided a memo in the packet that's publicly that our FY21 is ending much more favorably than we, you know, had anticipated. So, I don't know if Jim did, do you want to speak, mention it at all or if somebody, I don't want to misspeak, but, but it's been just, you know.
We did have savings from our contingency from last year. So, the projected budgets that we had last year, we managed to transfer some monies over to this year in the neighborhood of 350 to 100,000.
I think for me, of course, finances is always, is always a consideration and I still in the future would, you know, love for Mr. Fitten to provide those, you know, long-range pictures that will show what else is needed at the other schools, it's really valuable. At this time, though, having a flexible space that really is going to be invaluable, I think, next year especially, when we might need to space out more children and we don't actually know what's going to be happening, I think is valuable. And just hearing from the staff and the families, I think it's crucial that there is equity in schools about how the spaces get used and for teaching, that we have a reasonable space and some flexibility. So, I personally am in favor of it at this time. I, I wish we could have bundled more at this time, of course, but with, you know, all that we dealt with last year, this is, I think, a reasonable, I think it's a reasonable solution for now, so.
Given what Ramesh has said about the budget and Joel and Linda's comments and the other comments, I, I agree, this is, given where we're at right now, given what we know we planned, given what we, we sort of told the community for the last, you know, couple of years, I don't think we could realistically not say no to this now. So, I think I do support it, but I would add a caveat, which is that one of the main goals here of the board is to ensure parity between the schools. And that's actually explicitly in one of our, one of our guidelines for the facilities planning. And so, I see on the facilities agenda that fits in the board book here, that you did talk about Blythe Park, for, you know, some adding space or reconfiguring space of Blythe Park. And that's on the agenda, it's already in the file. And I think it's key to do that because if you think about right now, in our plan to sort of make Blythe a two-full-section school, we have up nine classes at Blythe Park. We have nine like grades. Everything up through second grade is up to two and then from three, four, and five is another one each. And there are a total of 12 classrooms at Blythe, so if you look at the number of classrooms per sort of grouping of grades, it's one and a third, which is exactly the same as what Hollywood is right now. Hollywood's got eight, eight classes and six sections. So, just on that rough metric, you know, Blythe is on parity with Hollywood right now, but over the next two years, and really at the, ready for next year, we're almost at, you know, ready at another section of grade three. So, within two years, we're going to have 12 groupings or, I don't know, classes at Blythe. We only have 12 classrooms, which is, which is one to one, which is like 50% less than what Blythe will be, it'd be at 1.5 if you include the multipurpose room. So, I think it's, and that's really not tenable, actually, and I think it's, we, Blythe Park was always the linchpin of our plan. The fact that Blythe Park was underutilized allowed us to transfer students from Central and then some students, you know, from the Ladsy program to Central. It allows us to maintain Central at three sections, allows us to make aims at three sections very comfortably. So, Blythe, Blythe Park has always been the linchpin of our, of our plan because it was highly underutilized. Now, it's going to be a full two-section school, it's going to be great for Blythe Park because two sections is, you know, you get twice as many students, you get a much more dynamic environment, no, no, no offense to Hollywood, which is its own, you know, its own virtues, but I think there's a lot to be said for two sections. And two full sections rather than one and a half section because, you know, in the past, it was, at some points in the past, it was, you know, one and a half. And that creates a very unstable environment because always different grades that are moving through and they have different turnover to teachers, I think that's also not, not ideal. So, I guess, for me, this, since we're only two years away, realistically, if you count, like, we're somewhere like at the time we're signing the third careers, really only two years away from the point at which Blythe Park is two full sections, two and a half years. So, and so it seems to me that we need to do something there relatively quickly. This isn't a long, and given how long it takes to do things, I really do think this has to be on the front burner, like, this has to be done and done quickly. Not, you know, not overnight, but it really, because otherwise, we're going to be in a situation where like, either we're bursting at the seams there or we don't go to the full two sections, which I think is a very, very bad move. And so, I do think that, you know, that this puts the impetus on us to, to really push the Blythe projects forward. So, those are my two cents on, on this.
I think from a teacher receptive, having two sections is, it's just so different and invaluable having another, another coworker to balance.
and invaluable having another, another coworker to bounce ideas off of and having someone to collaborate with and sometimes you're the only one and that's okay, but it is valuable. I still would really ask in the future, in the next two years, that we have a bigger long-term picture of what that's going to cost, along with the Central projects for playground and I think I, I personally need a bigger picture for those things to really analyze how are we going to manage the bundle and how are we going to pay for that long-term? So, I totally agree with you, but I think we need both hand in hand as function and then how are we going to manage?
And I, I think that is the plan, is that this summer's construction ends and immediately it's starting to plan for the next phase, which I, I've always, personally always knew in that Blythe project is coming and it's, you know, like, unfortunately, we had this year where we couldn't really do things, but you're right, it's, it's of most importance, absolutely.
Is it possible to even start, given, given the timelines involved, to, by this way, to start even talking about that, you know, sooner rather than later, just to get some ideas floating out there and, you know, you're thinking about in the back of your mind as opposed to waiting until the fall, you know, I think, I don't know.
I'll sit there, we've already reached out to DLA just to come and begin sort of brainstorm ideas. I know, you know, one of the ideas has been the modification of the auditorium, but, you know, are there other ideas out there that, again, somebody like our DLA architects who have really come to know our buildings really well and understand the historic issues, et cetera, so we'll, we'll begin that brainstorming process yet this spring. As you said, we know that these projects take a long time and, yeah, I think it's been sitting there kind of percolating as, as an idea and I, I think, you know, coming to some resolution about the current projects, the current goals will really help us then figure out what that next step is. And the way I see it, it's Blythe and it's the Central Hauser Outdoors that we've talked about also quite a bit and would love to figure out how to get that to, you know, a plan that we can implement.
And just, add just one more comment, which is that in those two, those two different projects, the Hauser, Central, and Blythe, I think, well, obviously, the central playground is very important because we can't have, every other school has a nice playground that's over Central, so we have, we sort of have to do that. But if there's any way to Hauser Outdoor, which is going to be, or Hauser Outdoor is sort of artificial turf field, which is going to be very expensive versus the Blythe Park, making that a full two-section school, which I think is totally doable based on, you know, rearranging the auditorium and all that. I do think the Blythe Park is like way more important because again, that, that school is, we're on a, we're on a tight timeline there, you know, two years until it really is full, you know, full two sections. So, I really think like that, to me, and again, my opinion is not going to matter, but to me, that's where I would put my emphasis.
I think it's also possible to do both projects. I think that's also very.
If you can do both, that's fine, yeah.
I think the Jeff Miller legacy will.
You're not going to hear from me, I assure you.
We'll, we'll hear your voice. But please note, your comments right now are duly noted and completely, I concur with them completely.
And I'll just say, Jeff, I remember the early comments, it was, we were trying to sort of quantitatively figure this out, I think about the sectioning and I think it was really your vision that said, I think Blythe needs to be a two-section school and nine sections at each grade level throughout as this predictable pattern. And yes, there are likely to be some bumps and glitches here along the way because enrollment isn't entire, isn't entirely predictable, but thank you for bringing up a lot of precision of thought and wonderful ideas. So I'm, you know, absolutely, I think Blythe and I think the improvements to Central Hauser seem like they're both within our, our reach as possibilities and I look forward to working with DLA and figuring out how to move these, these pieces forward.
All right, any more discussion?
I did have a question. So, I, I know that one of the things we've broken out here are windows, opening them rather than having them sealed and I wonder if we could speak to or the board could hear a little bit more reflection on the pros and cons of each choice there.
Operable windows have been the trend of late in the sense that you want to get ventilation going, natural ventilation rather than conditioned air. And especially after the pandemic, where we want to have additional air changes from outside, this makes total sense because it's much harder to replace the windows post-construction. It's a good option to take it on right now to come up with operable windows. And I think Joel had mentioned this during one of our Facilities Committee meetings, that why we seek out an alternate cost and the number fell right in our wheelhouse when we got it for $16,000. It's a great option and I think we should implement it.
After this year, I think we should do.
Yeah, and I, I just think in general, even before pandemic, I think fresh air and hearing birds and bringing, we live in an arboretum with, with nature, I think it's not a bad thing to bring a little bit of that in and you can close them when you don't need them. So, you know, it makes sense to me, especially with pandemics, so.
To add on to what Ramesh said, a lot of, and Ryan can either now to said yes or no after I'm done, but energy codes and design has been very focused on energy efficiency, which meant no opening windows, we want the mechanicals to deal with our air to keep it hot or cold. And that, that was where the trend was. There was a little bit of a trend starting to lean away from that towards more of a natural airflow situation, but the pandemic has really brought it more front and center and brought it much more to the forefront than it probably would have been otherwise.
You're right, actually, operable windows are the cheapest option. You can obviously have mechanical equipment.
That does the same thing for you in the sense that it takes in more outside air, but those are more expensive to accomplish and for a larger project, maybe it makes sense, but for a project of this size, operable windows are cheapest, most efficient way.
I think I know, given the age of the school, that I would imagine the rest of the windows in Hollywood are operable currently.
Yes. Am I correct, Ryan?
I don't know if you heard you.
Ryan, you're on mute.
The existing windows that, and they are.
I agree with what you said, Joel. I think that, yes, the reason for doing the fix is definitely energy efficiency, controlling that climate, changing more outside air is, and it does come at a premium, so given the size of building, operable windows would be the least expensive way to achieve that.
Thank you.
Martha, I think you mentioned in the past that the additional expense that's listed here, I think 16,000 could be a candidate for reimbursement through the federal coronavirus.
Right, so we believe we could put that extra money, which wasn't really anticipated in the project, but really because of the pandemic, I think it became back, you know, came back as the more popular idea. But we believe that it could be eligible for what we're calling our ESRS reimbursement, so our economic stimulus money through the federal government, just to carve that piece of the project out.
So even, I wrote down earlier, you said 1.2 million was the NPR bid for last year and it's 1.3. I couldn't find the actual bids from last year. What, what was the plate, like, what, of the 1.6, like, how much more is that from total cost of what we would have had last year? It's still just roughly 10?
So, last year's project, if you recall, was a GMP, a guarantee maximum price for all four projects together. We had asked Burgland to break it out for accounting purposes and they gave us the 1.2 million dollar number.
Oh, the 1.2 is for the playground as well?
No.
No, that was just, okay.
It was just for the.
Well, we never got a bid on the playground, did we?
No, we did not.
That's right, okay.
We didn't have a place to put a playground. Because of the time it took to, to.
To reach the agreement with Hollywood Community Association, yes.
Yeah, that's right, I forgot about that, okay. I didn't forget about that, I forgot, we didn't get to the bidding part of the playground.
I'm glad you asked the question, I was wondering the same thing, so yeah, that does make sense now.
Yeah, you had mentioned it was a third less, but it was a third less than what our estimate was, not, because we had no prior numbers, okay, thank you.
So it is still essentially for the, the multi-purpose room is roughly 100,000 more than it would have been a year ago, given where we're at and where the length of time it took to reach that agreement.
Right.
It's far better than what you were originally quoting, but 100,000 dollars more, I mean, it's still just, again, I mean, I don't think we should be paying the 100,000 more, I mean, I think we should pass that bill on to the HCA for them dragging their feet, I know we can't do that, but, and we could try.
We're not going to try that.
I mean, we have to do this project, but it's just, we were, we saved up, we went about this, it took a long time, this could have been done, the kids could have been, had a nicer school right now, a nicer playground, we need to have a nicer playground, but all but for the HCA.
For the record, I have to state one thing too, that I went to, when I went to school at elementary school, we ate lunch in the gym and it was fine.
Yeah, I mean, I, I heard, I heard a lot of people say that, that it's unsanitary, it's not nice, I would question the unsanitary part about it, I mean, but, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, that's not something, I don't know what backs that up, so.
I feel lucky, I was in California, we ate outside. So I feel a little bit lucky that we had that experience.
You are lucky, yeah.
There's also this, this movement in architecture, it's been around for 20 years, I'm sure Ryan knows about it, in residential architecture, you know, about making houses not bigger, but smaller, like the not-so-big house kind of idea. And the way that's done typically is, you can't, you know, you, to make a house smaller but still have the same functionality, some rooms have to do double duty, some rooms have to do two functions or more. And so I do think the idea of using rooms for, you know, multiple reasons is a good thing in general, it allows us to do, to use space efficiently, so I don't think that's a bad thing at all, actually, so, to your point, I agree.
I would agree with that. If you, if you look at, you know, some of the new spaces at Ames and Central, they are multi-purpose, you know, they're designed for flexibility, so finding, finding that within a space is, is what allows it to be bigger and it's designed.
I think everyone recalls, this will also be our music classroom and then it's an opportunity for large groups to convene, and yes, it's a place to eat lunch, but I think absolutely, I think Sheri, you said, the pandemic has made us value flexibility of space more than ever before.
It's like when we've all been doing it in our homes all year. This is our new office, it's.
Multi-purpose, absolutely. Any further discussion? All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Kathy, is there?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So are we voting on the whole project?
Yes, that's good, good to clarify that, yes. As, as the motion stands right now, we are voting on the entire project, meaning the multi-purpose room, the playground, so multi-purpose room for 1.3 million, 3,000, the, the playground for 292,000, and operable windows for 16,000 for a total of 1.6 thousand, excuse me, 1.6 million, 11,000. So yes, thanks, thanks for asking me to clarify that. So yes, at this time, we're voting on the entirety of the project, if, I believe, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Kathy, go ahead.
Okay. Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Mirhead?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Klyber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is the official, official school calendar. At this time, is there a motion that the Board of Education approved the 2021, 2022 official school calendar as presented?
Someone. Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is the same calendar we saw two weeks ago at the.
Same calendar we saw two weeks ago, it does, I think there, one calendar on our website had a different proposed first day of school, but we've now resolved that, so this, and I will put this out for parents tomorrow too and it will go up on our website as well.
I believe that was August 23rd, is that correct?
Yes, first day of students and staff coming back on the 23rd and 24th for Institute Day.
Right.
So, I do have just one question. Given sort of that we've done remote for so long, is, what's, I understand that we've done always conditional emergency days, are we ever going to really need emergency days going forward?
The State Board of Ed still requires you to put them in there. I know there's a lot of chatter about we should still give kids snow days and days to play out in the snow and that kind of thing.
Days with no power, that's happened.
Yeah, days with no.
Which is really remote.
Which would really ruin remote learning.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll keep them there.
If you had heating, if you had a day out for no heat or like, like, lack, if it was really cold, so that, that potentially could still be.
We had an emergency day once for flooding as well.
Yeah, the electricity flood.
So I do think there are, like, I hope we don't have them.
I hope we don't either.
Yeah.
But having delayed our start this year more towards after Labor Day, it should feel more normal since it's the last week of August, so.
And as you know, this year's last day is June 10th, that starts to feel really late, I think, for families and for staff, so we wanted to, even though we were very sensitive to the central fire protection project specifically, we had a number of conversations with Ramesh and once we knew the bids were in and the timelines were clear, we feel comfortable with this date and it, it's just a better match with the other school districts around us and we're always a little later than RB, but it's, it's hard, I know we have sometimes families that have children at both, so we didn't want there to be too much space between the start dates there.
Okay. Any additional discussion? All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mrs. Klyber?
Aye.
Mr. Mirhead?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item is Hauser's late start time, proposed action item. Is there a motion to the Board of Education approve the start time for Hauser to 8:30 AM to 3:50, excuse me, 3:35 PM for the 2021, 2022 school year as presented? Is there any discussion?
Can we name this like in Jeff's legacy? I feel like it's a legacy.
I wonder if we would have wanted it later.
It's like the.
For nine o'clock.
Okay, forget it.
See, I was right, I knew we wanted it later, yeah.
Name after Jeff when we get to nine.
We'll, we'll keep you posted. And I believe actually start time of the schools may have changed other times, it doesn't necessarily require board action, but the board does have governance over the school day and I just felt that this, you know, sort of married well with the school calendar and I, and I think it is important because it is a shift for the community, it is something I know this board expressed some desire to see happen as it related to the adolescent sleep research. And again, what, what I think Sheri had just shared a little bit ago, is we were doing this because of the pandemic and because of the scheduling and it didn't take long for April, May and Chris Harvales to point out to us that all of a sudden there just have not, tardies have not been an issue this year, so, so it just seems the, you know, something that makes a lot of sense, sense to do, so, that's why it is here for board action.
All right, is there any further discussion?
No.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Mirhead?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mrs. Klyber?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, which brings us to new business. The first item under new business is the strategic planning update, the final plan approval, not to be voted on tonight, but to be discussed, be presented. All right, that's where that was.
So our Zoom participant signing off.
Okay. So let's see, so the first item, pulling up here.
There's quite, there's quite a bit of detail here about the strategic plan, I just thought, I know Wesley and Dan, you both have, certainly, I appreciate the two of you participating. It's exciting that we brought this to, to close, which is really just beginning of the plan, but it's been a great process, we've had 35 members participating over, what was it, 12 different sessions, two hours on Zoom since December 15th. And again, I've just been so appreciative of the level of engagement of our parents, the two of US board members, our staff members, we had a number of students also from Riverside Brookfield High School join us. So it was really a great process and I know we had questions, could we really do this in the midst of the pandemic and would we lose something by doing it virtually and I just, I'm really, really excited about the level of engagement and really excited about the direction that the plan is taking and certainly want opportunity for the board to digest and ask questions and this is kind of hot off the presses, so it's something that we can take, you know, we want to make committee the whole and may board to talk about it more, it's, it's big, the board ultimately does have the responsibility to approve it and I know you're kind of just seeing parts of it, but you've been hearing about it along the way, so, want to share it.
Might make sense to, I know that our next meeting is supposed to be the shortest meeting in the the two years. Maybe it would make sense to talk about it a little more, maybe have a visual to present to the public in terms of, you know, the values that we're listing and the goals that we're stating. You know, I can see them here, but.
Right. The other thing I've wondered is, you know, there are things that really fall within each committee in terms of education, finance, facilities, personnel. If we'd want to somehow parcel out sections, even though not everybody was on the the planning team with the opportunity to take a look at the plan. And I'd be happy to check in with each committee chair chairs and kind of go over that and think about sharing it in that way. I think there's some very significant pieces here that I want to make sure that obviously the board has a comfort level and full knowledge. And then also that the community does.
Right. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I know, even though I wasn't on the planning committee this time, I'm looking at the student growth and achievement goals. And they're exactly what's, you know, when we first brought on Angela, Director of Teaching and Learning, exactly what we were talking about. And even the last strategic planning about equity for subgroups, achievement for every child, working on, you know, do we consider all day kindergarten? All these things are not by any means a surprise. And so I think it'd be perfectly fine to have that. I don't know what the other chairs feel, but I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I was actually just I haven't had a chance to talk with either Martha or Dan about this, but just like my own personal reflections about it. I was thinking like dedicating a good chunk of time at a Cowa meeting would probably be good. There's a.
I agree.
20, I think it was this one labeled many exclamation points Riverside SP1.
I felt that meant.
Came first.
When I saw it, I was like, that's when I should open first.
That's what I was intent there. I'm guessing.
That's not my labeling either. That's from CEC. I'm not sure.
Oh, really? Yeah, okay. Maybe they're excited.
I thought it was like a.
I thought it was a note.
But I think that was like a 28 page slide or something, which goes through the different sections of the plan, but then also goes into the detail of the process. I don't know that we need to go through the whole thing because we've given some of the details of like.
Agreed.
As we were going, but I think really going through the plan as Martha suggested and then tying that. So from a board perspective, tying that to which committee will be responsible for what, like the next step is going to be, what exactly are the specific goals? And then the committees are going to have to own those. And then on the other side, like, how do you execute that within within the schools themselves? And in the different factions there. So I think it's taking some time just to kind of kick that around a little bit and make sure that we're we've got everything that we need as a district in our long term vision kind of wrapped up in here and it makes sense. I don't think we can do, I mean, we could theoretically do whatever we want. I don't think it would be smart to make any large changes, but we could still make little minor tweaks or fill in gaps and things like that before we final approve it. And I think the other thing, too, is I know we we haven't had one of our self, whatever we call it, self reflection exercises because of everything going on. But just kind of thinking back to the last one we did, kind of setting a cyclical calendar to check in on this. And so everybody kind of knows on these dates, at these times, these are the people that are going to present the information that's there just to try to keep ourselves from letting this thing slip away. Because as Perry told us, I think at every single meeting, if you stick it on a shelf, it's not going to work. So you got to make sure you've got some actions in place. So I think doing that at the Cowa.
When do those specific measurable goals get developed? Because that's not.
After we include the plan.
Okay, that's.
So yeah, so that really ties into what do we need to accomplish this year? So this is the big picture for five years. And then every single year is, okay, within this column, what are the specific things we want to achieve? So facilities wise, this year is going to be the Hollywood, next year will be Central Hauser, the year that would be. And so those goals change, but the broader umbrella stays the same for the duration.
I like your idea, though, of doing like a condensed look next because it is overwhelmingly large. And then and then we can piece it up. That seems more, I think, easier for the public to understand and for us who aren't on the committee every day. So I think that's good.
And really the, you know, the launch of it is really to start the new school year with a new plan in place. And so I know there's, you know, I certainly feel eagerness. I'm very excited about the plan. I'm excited about the work that the the committee did together and but I know the May 4th meeting is the board reorganization. If we want to keep it just as that, we could certainly, you know, move this on into May board and even June Cowa. There's, you know, there's no real requirement on us. This is this is our draft plan. I want the board to have the time and the opportunity to really digest it, absorb it, ask questions, put context and rationale to the the big ideas that are in the plan. Happy to do whatever I can to kind of just bridge those conversations. I know Dan and Wesley also I'm sure are. So, you know, if we want to think about the best times or the best ways, I do think a Cowa meeting might be good and kind of take it by by committee because I think there's some.
I do think that's a great idea and it would allow, you know, folks on those individual committees, I think, you know, as you were mentioning, to focus in, figure out what is this one stating in the plan that's relevant to their committee? How are they going to incorporate those goals and how do how do we move towards towards meeting them? I think that's an excellent idea.
I totally think that's perfect, what you're saying. And like for the new board member as well, it'd be a perfect way for them to be acclimated in a more detailed way and to hear about that rather than just reading a document.
Kind of your point, Sheri, I think like there is a lot in here that is similar. And so some people might be saying, well, why do you have the same stuff in this plan? Well, some of it is just core mission and getting better at it. But other, I think one of the pieces of feedback we got was, I think it was something, I'm going to get the quote wrong, but it was like you, the last plan had evaluate full day kindergarten. This plan should be, we're going to do it. And it's like, well, we're not ready to do it. So we can't say we're going to do it. Because then if we don't, then we're right. So but it but it's kind of tackling those things, like why did we not get it accomplished? Is it so? And then by the committee level, like, what do we need to do to enact some of these things? So. And then the other comment I was going to make is it's it's to do that in a Cowa meeting, I think, is good as well. Because it's not just a community thing. It's not just parents we're talking to. It's also staff. And so like making sure all stakeholders have that that weren't in the committee because it was 35 of us or whatever. But then having that more public conversation, so to speak, which hopefully will get some natural feedback through different mechanisms as well.
So you think the more appropriate Cowa meeting would be the June Cowa then and wait till after the reorganization?
So would it be, oh, yeah, because the May one.
Right. Actually, that that makes a lot of sense because at that point, we have some folks probably moving around from committee to committee. We'll have a new board member as well.
Yeah, geez. God, it's hard to think we're in May already.
So it'd be June, June Cowa. But I think that's fine. You know, again, I think the.
Yeah, we'll have this somewhere in front of us.
Yes, yeah.
And I think, you know, looking over it, it's not like any of us are going to come in and was like, oh, we got to rework all. I mean, it's a really good plan. So I don't think it's a matter of like, there's not like work to do on it. You've already, oh, you've already done the work. It's just kind of like.
Yeah.
Going through it publicly together.
Yep.
You know, making sure we're tying everything.
Yeah, exactly.
So I don't think June is a problem.
I think it's fine. You might get a few more public comments from people that hadn't read it or, you know, it's not a bad thing.
I don't think we should do it at the organization meeting.
No, that's weird. It's a little bit strange, I think.
All right. Thanks. That helps.
Sounds like we have a plan.
Right.
We have a plan for our plan. Couldn't resist a dad joke. All right.
I got it, Dan.
Thank you, Dave. Next item for discussion, the Hauser graduation, June 2021.
So I can share a little bit here. So the board doesn't typically, again, take action. This doesn't really require action. But again, because of the pandemic, there's been a lot of careful consideration to, you know, can we have a graduation celebration? How can we safely have a graduation celebration? And I know April May and Chris Harvales put a lot of time and attention and consideration into this. So as you see, the idea is to have an outdoor graduation at the stadium at Riverside Brookfield High School to limit, still limit attendance to some degree, also to not have an indoor alternative, you know, really to move it to a rain date, which is the Saturday that's listed just after Saturday, June 5th would be the rain date. Also at 10 o'clock at the RB Stadium. It sounds very safe, you know, given with where the virus is now. I think if the virus were to get a lot worse. I mean, we also know that there would be limitations put on gatherings and that kind of thing. So this would be our plan for now. But given the safety issues that are involved, I just wanted to make sure that the board had a comfort level with it or not. You know, if you don't, I think it's just important that we discuss that that here and that we would, you know, make make a different plan.
I do have one question. I noticed I didn't see anything. How are the how are they going to distribute diplomas this year? How are they trying to distribute? Is it going to be a traditional way where they go up in stage?
Yeah. So I think that would, you know, again, I don't, I'm sure April and Chris have thought of some of those logistics. I think we're fine with the shared, you know, I mean, I think what we've demonstrated is everyone has clean hands. You can, you know, share a.
Just hand a.
A thing.
Yeah.
Probably not shaking a bunch of hands.
Yeah, we wouldn't be handshaking, right.
It's not so much of touching as it is inhaling.
Right. No, I just.
I think it's been demonstrated that the the chance of passing coronavirus via touch as opposed to air is is fairly miniscule.
It's probably just a matter of how close you are for how long.
Correct, yes.
No, I think this is a great option. There is a lot of space at that stadium at RB. Even if you wanted to go to the other bleachers or move to the other sides, there's there's a lot of space to feel comfortable, even if you don't want to sit in the stands next to other people. And everybody will be masked, obviously. I think it's great. I'm I'm really excited to hear that these these end of year celebrations, these milestones are are going to be celebrated and in the way in a safe, safe fashion. So I appreciate that. So I'm glad that Chris and April are doing this.
And I assume it'd be optional as well. If somebody individually wasn't comfortable, they don't have to show up.
Right. As a matter of fact, I think I just read an article about SC Gross's Brookfield, our neighboring districts. And they, you know, they were clear. If you don't want to participate, you not have to. Nobody would have to. So I, we can certainly make note of that. I think it's kind of implied, but but we can be more explicit about that.
I've been to events at the stadium as of late with sporting and it, there's a lot of space there. And just even at last watching the band be able to completely separate on the track and be so far away from each other. There's so much space if you include the field, the track. I mean, it's just.
Yeah, I mean, it's just the outdoor ventilation. I mean, I think I read somewhere that there's been no documented case of outdoor transmission basically ever. Like, it just doesn't, it just doesn't. It goes back to the aerosol is going to be so diluted outside that the risks are extremely minimal.
Yeah. And I've noticed that people are following the mask mandates at, you know, at events at the stadium already. So it's.
So it would be outdoor socially distanced and mask wearing. So I think we've really hit on the, you know, key targets there.
I would maybe say you may want to consider for those that we do have a small population of students that are like fully remote for other health reasons and things that we still make their their graduation special and don't forget to honor them in a separate way. So I'm sure they'll figure that out, but so they don't feel left out.
Apparently, we have a good number that showed up for IAR testing. So I'm encouraged that maybe, you know, some will be comfortable coming to events. But absolutely, we'll we'll make sure. And I know last year, there were a lot of efforts to make sure that there was a sense of celebration for the A3 graduates last year. So but another good point. We'll make sure that.
This note says that we Facebook Live, too. So obviously, every student's going to be honored, whether they are in present or not, just as always. So, yeah.
Does that scoreboard allow video?
Yeah.
There is no video screen over here.
Maybe they could put up a photo of that.
Well, so I'm sure they're happy to take donations.
We actually looked into Riverside TV. We looked into RB has their own, I think, studio to do it. And it just didn't work out. So we ended up with Facebook Live as our best option.
That's great.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
So again, no action required this new business anyway. I can bring it back for action item. By the time I bring it back, you know, obviously, planning has to be pretty well underway. So in communication with family. So I just, again, wanted to get a read for if there was a disagreement or a.
No.
Discomfort.
Anyone in disagreement? Anyone concerned? Yeah.
Move forward.
Yeah, I think we have to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item is the co-curricular overview.
And I can take that one as well. So this year, we did modify, if you recall, in normal times, we bring co-curricular proposals to the Board of Education in the spring or early summer to approve them for the following school year. This year, we did make a modification through a memorandum of understanding, actually with the teachers' union, that the proposals would come directly to me and I would approve them. Partially, we because as an efficiency and we knew we were working sort of under budget in this area, that we weren't going to be able to offer the full array of programs that we typically do. But since, you know, things have shifted and changed and people have gained comfort and understanding what the protocols are that really do seem to be those preventative protocols, we've been able to offer a number of activities for our students. I know that was something that the board was really invested in when we set our goals earlier was, you know, what opportunities are there for students when so many other opportunities are being shut down? So I think our teachers have done a really great job of finding some creative ways to still bring children together in ways that feel safe, socially distanced, and really meet our COVID mitigation strategy. So what you have here is an overview, and I think you have a note here from Jim at the top that speaks to and where we are in terms of the under budget nature of our co-curriculars. But we have been able to run a number of these successfully and some are still yet to come up here in the spring and relying on warmer and nicer weather to do some of do some of them. So I wanted you to be aware, again, not board action not required, but again, because this is an area that the board typically does take action on, again, wanted to want to bring it all to your attention. Are there any questions about it or concerns?
No.
No. I'm glad we've been able to find some opportunities, both because our staff, I think for them, it's a real passion and it's a way that they really connect with children outside of the classroom and for our children, obviously, to participate in these activities.
It's probably too early to ask about next year's, but I assume next year's we'll be able to do more. It's really hard to say at this point, but I'm speculating.
Right. It is. It is hard to say for sure, but I think, you know, one, we've learned through these activities. And, you know, I think people that had one kind of activity that maybe didn't feel quite as safe or required kids to congregate too much made some shifts and changes. So, you know, I think that's a good point. We'll probably plan to follow our protocol, which would be by spring, teachers would propose for the coming year. The board have an opportunity to take a look at them. We actually review them in a committee prior to bringing them to the board. And we can plan as if, as if normal. And if somebody would need to be modified because of COVID, we could do that.
All right. So we'll move on to public comment?
There's no additional.
No additional public comment? Okay. And that brings us to future meeting dates. Next meeting will be May 4th, 2021 is the biennial organizational meeting, 7:00 p.m. in the Ames Multipurpose Room. Please note the date change. This meeting will be held on a Tuesday. Next meeting will be May 19th, 2021, regular business meeting, 7:00 p.m. in the Ames Multipurpose Room. The board will enter into closed session at 6:30 p.m. if necessary and return to open session at 7:00 p.m. And if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.